At this time, we're going to re-adjourn the meeting. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
Re-convene.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry, guys.
It's like a roll call? Take a roll call, Mr. Adenizio.
Present.
Mr. MacArthur.
Here.
Ms. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Sam Filippo.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Wondrack. Ms. Wadniak.
Here.
Ms. Connolly.
Here. At this time, Superintendent Dyer is going to introduce our special presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Actually, I'm going to introduce Mr. Leonard, who is then going to introduce the special presentation. These students are going to be moving forward in the New Jersey School Boards Association Steam Tank Competition, and Mr. Leonard will explain. Thank you. Board members, if you'd like, there are reserved seats in the audience, so you'll be able to see the screen and participate or observe the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dyer. Thank you to the board for allowing us to present tonight. I am joined by three fantastic young women who will be discussing the product that they have developed over the past few months. This is a great opportunity for them to not only showcase what they've done, but to present a group of people, and that will be something that pays dividends for the rest of their futures. To give you a little background on this project that they've been working on, as part of the freshman year engineering course within the pre-engineering academy, there is an entrepreneurship unit, and within that unit, the students have to develop a product that not only has to take into consideration empathic or user-centered design, but also the fact that the product has to be mass-produced, and it has to be something that appeals to a large group of people so that it can make a profit. These students took that design and entered it into the steam tank design competition. They had to first submit a proposal that allowed them to be considered for the regional competition. They presented in front of a group of judges at the regional competition, and they have recently been selected to present at the state competition. I'm extremely proud of them. They have put in countless hours' energy. They've gone through, as you'll see, numerous design iterations, and this was a great experience for them to see what it truly takes to design a tangible product. So, I'll let the ladies do the talking. I'd like to introduce Isabel DiNofrio, Brianna Dudley, and Angel Lee.
Hi, I'm Angel Lee.
I'm Brianna Dudley.
And I'm Isabel DiNofrio.
We are student athletes enrolled in the school's 2022 Pre-Engineering Academy. For a class project, we developed a jewelry container for athletes.
At the start of the school year, we learned how to use different computer-aided design software such as AutoCAD and Inventor. We used these programs to design our invention for our entrepreneurship unit. This unit, we were challenged to start an enterprise to produce a product. We created an athletic jewelry container.
Due to sport regulations, we aren't allowed to wear any type of jewelry during games or practices for safety precautions. From past experiences, we have had our jewelry misplaced or broken due to the lack of protective storage in sports bags. For example, I lost my earrings after a volleyball game because I placed them in my bag and I was rushing, so I threw my bag on the ground and they were misplaced in the locker room.
I had a similar experience. Before every lacrosse practice, I would always be scared of losing my good earrings. I would always have to take them out and hand them to my coach or my parents, but they would only put them in their pockets. I also, bags are also piled and stepped on when everyone's in a rush, and my mouthguard container broke when someone recklessly stepped on my bag.
Americans will spend over $18 billion on jewelry in 2019, and it is expected to grow annually by 0.9%. Nearly 8 million students are currently participating in high school athletics in the United States.
Let's say that 4 million of those students are female, and we charge approximately $15 per case. That is a $60 million market, but if only 5% buy it, that's about a $3 million market.
For the reasons of breakage and misplacement of jewelry and to accommodate the rising amount of student athletes, we wanted to create a product to help us and others conveniently and safely store our jewelry.
We searched the market for a product to satisfy our needs. The first result was a small fabric pouch that wouldn't protect the jewelry if stepped on or thrown. The other was a large container, which was too big to conveniently store jewelry for travel, so we wanted to create a jewelry container that would not only provide protection, but also convenience.
We designed our product on Inventor. It has two compartments that snap together. A big part of steam tank is sustainability. We implemented this into our design by using sustainable products and recyclable materials. The top compartment, which contains a recyclable polyethylene foam, is for earrings and rings. The bottom compartment, which contains a TPU 95A insert for necklaces and bracelets. We took into consideration tangled necklaces and added two posts to prevent this. The shell is made out of a durable ABS plastic. There's a clip to attach it to bags.
Our first mock-up was made out of paper to estimate dimensions. We started on Inventor with two compartments that were held together with a friction fit. Then we add a third compartment with a hinge and a friction fit, with foam and Velcro on the inside to hold necklaces. We lowered the profile of the design to make it smaller and added better curves for aesthetics, improved the hinging and latching because we wanted to be resistant to the impact, and we added a loop to allow it to be attached to bags. Our most recent design has improved latching and a smaller top as well.
After we designed our prototype, we ran a market survey through an Instagram poll asking other student athletes if they would, if this container would help. Eighty-nine percent responded positively.
In the future, we hope to reach out to female athletes for feedback and support. We also want to contact manufacturers to determine the cost of production. In addition, if we put this invention on the market, we want a portion of the profit to go towards an organization. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies, I remember from the school boards competition last October that one of the questions that the judges asked every group was about cost and if they had contacted manufacturers and did they, you know, sort of have a business plan. So, I was glad to hear that that's something that you're thinking about as your next steps because I imagine that you'll be asked that when you are at the state competition down in Atlantic City. Does anyone from the board have questions for, with regard to our presentation?
No questions, but thank you so much for sharing that with us. I think it's absolutely awesome, and I wish you guys the greatest success with it, and I really do hope that maybe it makes it to the market one day because I know you have at least two purchasers up here, so.
I do just have one comment to make. I was at the delegate assembly, and the Dr. Larry Feins out of New Jersey School Boards Association just mentioned the fact that the first year of their steam tank, there were 32 teams, and in 2019, there were 560 teams representing 2,000 students. So, awesome, awesome job to be advancing at that level.
I have to say, congratulations. And there would be a third purchaser for my daughter also, so, good luck, girls.
Pursuant to our policy, when we have a special presentation, if anybody from the audience has any questions or comments on the special presentation, we open the floor for it. So, is there anybody who has any questions or comments on the steam tank presentation? Okay, seeing none. If you guys want to get out of here, you're more than welcome to leave. You don't have to stay, but we thank you for being here. And one more time, if we could just give them a big round of applause. And moving on to another awesome student, we have our student representative report.
Thank you, Isabel, Angel, and Brianna for that wonderful presentation. Good evening, Mrs. Connolly, Superintendent Dyer, and members of the Board of Education. Tonight, for the last official presentation by the Class of 2019 Board of Ed representatives, until the conclusion in June, we want to thank the dedicated teachers, administrators, parents, community, and Board of Ed who continuously support our students throughout the school year. I'm excited to highlight an event from each school in the district in addition to discussing the happenings of the high school. Please bear with me, this will be a long one. Last Friday, Allenwood held their annual May Fair. As usual, it was a great event filled with food trucks, a prize table, and a mechanical bowl. The Allenwood alums returned to run the game tables and say hi to friends and family. The fifth graders at West Belmar had Fun and Fitness Day, and the PTA hosted this Spring Book Fair with an excellent selection of books. The kindergarten and first grades gave thanks to a special person in their lives with poems and songs for Mother's Day. Finally, the third grades celebrated their families with their Door to Success program. Central School fifth graders also participated in Fun and Fitness Day. They had been involved in a clothing drive for the community, which I'm sure helped us all with our spring cleaning. The intermediate school has been busy this past month. The fifth annual sixth-grade Greek Olympics took place as accumulation of ancient civilization units. The students participated in events such as dodgeball, penguin race, and cyclops toss. Mrs. Bramley, Mrs. Feldman, and Mrs. Campbell planned the event, and the students had a wonderful time. The competition music ensembles swept the Music in the Parks competition, each ensemble earning superior rating and a first-place overall finish. The eighth graders visited the Harry Rockefeller Memorial Statue and were given a presentation by Officer Mike Malone, who brought to light the story of the World War II hero. Old Mill School Student Council members worked with the Holman School Association and Wall Township Schools Maintenance Department to purchase two water coolers that will provide filtered replacement water at both fountain locations, and will be selling refillable bottles with the OMS Bulldog logo printed on them. The profits will return to the Old Mill Holman School Association. At the high school, these past couple weeks of testing have gone by quickly. Students finished their advanced placement exams and NJISLA testing. This marks the closing of the fourth marking period as finals will begin next month. The seniors will be honored by receiving local scholarships on May 30th at the Scholarship Dinner for their success in academics, involvement in the community, and participation in sports throughout their four years at Wall High School. Student life has been buzzing at Wall High School with May and June being very eventful months. Some key field trips are underway. The Environmental Club will be traveling to Sandy Hook to explore the wildlife this upcoming Thursday. Next week, the NNDCC students will be traveling to the Battleship Museum and Memorial in Camden. The math club students are excited to be heading to the National Museum of Math in New York City, and the marine science students are headed to Big Brook Park where students will get to let loose their inner paleontologist. We are fortunate to have a multitude of opportunities to learn outside of the classroom walls. Wall High School students are proud of the community service efforts put forth throughout the school year. This past Friday, the Wall Care Club hosted its annual Night of Giving, where we are honored to report that over 100 students raised $12,000 for cancer. Additionally, the Environmental Club supported our community with a great turnout on the Wall Township Community Cleanup Day. Senior prom tickets are on sale this week. Prom theme is "Black Tie" and will be held on June 7th at the Southgate Manor in Freehold. The seniors are looking forward to quite a number of events, including senior sports awards and senior night, where the students will get to design their personalized tiles that get hung up in the school and, of course, graduation. We are proud to announce that Casey Stepp and Joey Fardella were selected to receive the Sportsmanship Award at a luncheon this past Sunday. We should also celebrate the boys' golf team, who are state sectional champs. The boys' volleyball team plays tonight in the first round of states, and the softball team won the Monmouth County Tournament Blue Division on Saturday. Thank you again, Mrs. Connolly, Superintendent Dyer, and members of the Board of Education.
Thank you very much for sharing all of that with us. Now, we will see you next month? Okay, excellent. Are there any questions for Molly before we, I imagine you have something to study for or something to do? Is there any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we thank you very, very much. You're welcome. Good luck with finals and everything between now and then June 18th. Thank you. Thank you. This month, or yeah, this month's Students of the Month at Wall High School, in ninth grade, we had Mia DiGenova; in 10th grade, Michael Donahue; in 11th grade, Rupak Eepan; and in 12th grade, Gillian DeBrito. For the nights of the week, in 10th grade, Nicole Travers for the week of April 1st; also in 10th grade, Crystal Margot, the week of April 8th; in 10th grade, Evan DeAngelis for the week of April 15th; and in 11th grade, Benjamin Neve, the week of April 29th. We also have students of the third marking period. For art, we had Taylor Popola; business, Trey Dombrosky; English, Ava Bon Giovanni; family life, Remy Reinhardt; math, Merle Kirshenbaum; music, Joseph Bruno; NNDCC, Tyler Preston; PE and health, Joshua Cross; science, Alexis Terrassiano; social studies, Grace Black; technology education, Sophie Remy; and world language, Ria Amara. Beyond that, I am going to, I don't have a president's report this month. I think Molly stole the show telling us all the wonderful things that are going on. Everybody has access to the district calendar. May and June are the month of concerts and wonderful celebrations, so I encourage everybody here and here to participate in those. I'll pass it on to Mrs. Dyer for the superintendent's updates.
My update is basically to reiterate the same. Tonight, we have the art show in the media center, so I hope that you have an opportunity to stop in there. And also, as you mentioned, concert season has begun. We had a wonderful concert here last evening, another one scheduled for tomorrow, and pretty much every night until graduation, there is something happening in the schools that celebrates the success of our students and the support of the teachers that brought them to that level of success. So, please come out and see what's happening. If you have an elementary-age child, it's great to see what lies ahead at the intermediate school and the high school, and I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
There's no Board of Education updates listed. Did I forget anything, or are we good as far as that's concerned? Okay, I think we're good. Then, we'll move on to committee reports, and we'll start with Mrs. Wadniak and the policy committee report.
Thank you. The policy committee met on May 5th from 5:00 PM to 6:35 PM. In attendance were Allison Connolly, Mrs. Dyer, myself, and Mike MacArthur. We have one policy that was on the agenda for first reading, and that, actually, it's a regulation. It's R8420.2 bomb threats, and as we reported last month, the district's school safety specialist, Kevin Davis, and lead safety officer, Michael Texter, had gone to a training seminar on bomb threats, and they had some recommendations as to revisions to reflect the current protocol and best practice, and we've received their recommendations for revision, and the committee recommends approval upon first reading. In addition to that, when you look further in the report, we had some discussion items that we also, the committee also decided to move for first reading. So, this evening for first readings, the committee recommends approving the use of school facilities, both the policy and the regulation 7510, the regulation 8420.2 bomb threats, and 9210 parent organizations. In terms of second readings, we have 5516 use of electronic communication and recording devices, 5533 student smoking, 7434 smoking on school grounds, and those just have minor revisions to them to update the definition of school buildings and grounds so that there will be consistency with the other policies that over the last couple months were revised to update that definition. Excuse me. So, I did want to address the committee discussion and outcome on 7510, the use of school facilities, if I could. if I could. So not only did we revise some minor grammatical issues, we included more specific language regarding board approval of extended use of facilities as listed in the regulation. In terms of the actual regulation, committee members present had a lengthy discussion of the philosophical differences among stakeholders with regard to who should bear the cost of additional custodial personnel and security personnel expenses related to fundraising efforts of our school's parent organizations. The various parent groups made a very clear their feeling that personnel expenses related to security and custodial services for their fundraising activities should not be their responsibility. Other stakeholders have expressed the opinion that the board's allowance of the district to assume these personnel costs is tantamount to redirecting taxpayer dollars from the district budget to fund projects that are outside the budget, essentially financially contributing to the organizations. The committee members present acknowledged their deep appreciation for the hard work and efforts of the various parent organizations and their volunteers to provide the extras that are not included in the budget for the benefit of the schools and the students and staff therein. The committee discussed that, as already stipulated, the district already makes school facilities available to parent groups at no cost for the facility, and that in addition, the district provides basic custodial services at no cost when one is already scheduled to be onsite, and that includes on Saturdays. It's the consensus of the committee members that since fundraising efforts of parent groups are to financially support the schools and not the other way around, parent groups should be responsible for the overhead costs of their activities, such as additional custodial expenses and expenses related to security, and they should not be financially subsidized by the district for these costs. However, the committee also recognizes the great work that the parent groups do and do not wish to deprive the schools and the students and staff therein of the benefits provided them by the respective parent groups. Therefore, it's the recommendation of the committee that the regulation be amended to exempt the Primary School PTG, Allenwood PTG, Cape, which is from Central School, Old Mill Holman School Association, West Belmar PTA, Wall Intermediate School PTO, and the Wall High School Boosters PTO from custodial and security personnel costs for up to two Saturdays per year. The committee also reviewed 9210, which is parent organizations, and just one change was to revise the term pupils to students. And that is the, I think that's everything in the report. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam President.
Mr. Adnizio.
So when we looked at it, the financial impact on the district is so minimal compared to what PTOs and PTGs and everybody gives back. Why would we even set a limit of two Saturdays? I mean, I don't know if they use more than two, but I just think the perception that you only have two, I still think that, in a way, undermines the work they do.
I can let Mrs. Zwanjak answer. We actually, after, the day after the policy meeting, we very specifically scheduled a president's council meeting and sat down with representatives from all the PTOs and PTGs, and I don't want to use the wrong acronyms, but sat down with all the people who were relevant to this conversation. And they were fine with this policy, because looking at what they do and when they do it, the Saturdays were really the only times that there was a cost being incurred. So I believe that was the motivating factor, the driving factor, but we sat around the table, and this was, this was okay. We were not putting this forward without having talked to them first.
Okay, so all of them were on board with it, so it's okay then?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was the consensus at the meeting. So, I mean, that's, that was how we did it. We had the conversation policy, moved it the next day to the president's council meeting. They were happy with it. We were happy, they were happy, and we figured we would push, we would push policy forward and get it done with, make everybody happy.
Everybody's happy, I'm happy. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from Mrs. Zwanjak regarding the policy minutes? Okay, and I completely usurped you. Did you want anything to add to the response? Okay. So then we will move on to the Personnel Report. Mr. MacArthur?
Thank you. Good evening. The Personnel Committee met on May 1st from 7:15 to 9:30. In attendance was Mrs. Dyer, myself, Mrs. Zwanjak, Mrs. Malloy, and Mr. Wondrack. We discussed the Human Resources Report in its infancy for the month. The superintendent shared with us her attendance at that point, and we discussed that. We also went over the nonrepresented employee contracts. We touched based on the nonrenewals of nontenured teachers and certified staff. We did discuss transfer requests that had come in, and then the remainder of the meeting was our committee. We did discuss the WTEA negotiations ongoing and how we're handling that. Thank you, and submitted by myself.
Any questions on the Personnel Report? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Malloy, Curriculum Committee?
The committee met, the committee met on May 7th at 5:00 PM. The meeting ended at 6:15. In attendance was Ms. Connolly, Mrs. Dyer, Dr. Gleason, Mr. Sanfilippo, Mr. Kokoda, Dr. Samaha.
Samaha.
Sorry, Samaha, and Mrs. Kerman. Dr. Gleason presented a very detailed, in-depth presentation on all of the wonderful work that has been on the math evaluation program for the grades six through 12. Dr. Gleason, Mr. Kokoda, Mrs. Kerman, and Dr. Samaha, okay. With their committee did a very detailed deep dive into the math program for grade six through 12. They included a historical review, current practices, and a comparison with other districts. The team has put a lot of time and effort into the evaluation and presentation, and the board sees the value and appreciates all of the hard work. We just need to give more thought on how to communicate this to the full board. There were no other agenda items, and the presentation, I believe, is on the website?
Yes, and that was it?
It is, and at the next board meeting, we'll have highlights from three program evaluations at the same time. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Malloy with regards to the curriculum? Okay. The FNF Report, Mr. Adnizio?
Yes, good evening. So, we actually had two meetings. The second one, the actual monthly meeting, was on May 5th, I'm sorry, May 6th. It started at 5 o'clock, ended at 7:40 PM. In attendance was President Allison Connolly, Superintendent Cheryl Dyer, Business Administrator Brian Smythe, Mr. Romano, Facilities, Robin Zwanjak, and Chris Sanfilippo, and apparently I forgot to check myself off, but I assure you I was there. So our, so the first meeting we had was on April 29th, and the purpose of that special meeting was to interview three of the four architectural firms that had applied to be the Architect of Record for the district. We interviewed three of the four because one of them, when we reached out to them, they were unavailable, they were out of state, so we had scheduled them for, to go in the first slot before we start our regular monthly FNF meeting on May 6th. So to pretty much just summarize, we allotted 30 minutes to each firm. They gave PowerPoint presentations. All that was presented to us and should be on our website for everybody to view. Some were excellent, some were very in-depth. I think all the firms had strong qualities, and, you know, so at the end of all the interviews on May 6th, when we, after we interviewed the last firm, the committee, we had a discussion. We talked about the long-range facility plan, and in the minutes, it's LRFP, for those in the audience who aren't sure what that is. I did put that in there someplace. We talked about the different presentations and who we felt would be the best fit for the district and the community, and the community recommends, oh my God, Spiezel, I'm sorry, couldn't get it out, Spiezel Architectural Group for the roofing and the long-range facility plan. And just a little more background on them, just briefly, I'm not going to get into everybody else we interviewed, because it's in the minutes. They, they've been around for over 65 years. They have 75 employees with 22 lead professionals, and they're also on call 24 hours a day. That was something they, they informed us in another district where there was an issue on a holiday, and the owner answered his phone, and they had people go out. What they are looking to do is they're going to come out and look at our facilities, give us ideas as to different things we can do. The one thing that these architectural firms are very big into is looking at spaces that are underutilized, you know, revitalizing media centers to bring them up to what students today need and can use. This firm has done different media centers, STEM labs, with a focus on making them useful for today's students. They showed us in the presentation different projects they've completed. The engineering portion of what they do is subbed out. They will work with an engineering firm if we have one, or they will use one. They also don't just generically use an engineering firm for everything they do. They will get specific engineers for specific projects that best suit that project, which was good to hear. They said they'd walk us through the process of, you know, the first step is having a meeting with the administration and then do a full assessment of our district, and they feel that takes about three months. They would prioritize everything from immediate to things that can go out a few years that need to be done. They'd meet with administration, our facilities, and then finally the FNF Committee, and then, I'm sorry, and then finally the whole board. Once this is done, they will upload all that information into the state website, which everybody has stressed is very ancient and very difficult to work with at no additional charge to us. They will do, with the demographic study, they would do drawings on potential spaces that could be upgraded. That report would go also into the website, which gives us the functional capacity report. That means how, how much, how many students can be in a particular space. And this particular firm was looking for a long-term partnership with the district. They weren't looking for just to jump in and do a project and then get out. They want to be here, they want to be our go-to firm to answer questions and come in and give us ideas, and the committee as a whole felt very comfortable with them, and we were very impressed with their presentation. So that is our recommendation this evening to the full board. Moving along, we reviewed RFPs for the demographic study. We're going to wait and speak to the new Architect of Record once they're finally approved and get input from them to see what direction we want to go, because they might have someone else that might be better to work with, so we're going to wait on that. We got an update on the enterprise accounts. Oh, I'm sorry, there's, I made a mistake. Just noticed that. That's what happens when you do minutes late and then you do them early. We received our monthly enterprise account update. I believe we were in the positive about $44,000. All right. Things are humming along, there's no issues. The other thing that was in my notes, if I remember correctly, we had a discussion on some of the talk that was going around about accounts being charged incorrectly, and it was determined that there were no mistakes. It was looked into thoroughly, and I believe there was only one phone call from a parent questioning something and to our food service manager, and that was taken care of. Ms. Dyer? I'm sorry.
I'll just, I'll jump in if you don't mind. There are always opportunities for errors, and, but the, the thing that folks were talking about that might have been perceived as a glitch in the system actually had to do with our after-school purchases. So just like a bank closes out its business at a certain time in the day, the food service closes out their business for the day at 3:00, so, or 2:00 at the high school. So purchases that are made by students in the after-school programs are charged to the next day. So a parent might see that their child was out on a particular day, so how could they have had a meal or cafeteria purchase, but it was actually from the previous day? Well, whenever there's errors made, you know, as long as the parent reaches out to our food service department, they're, they seem to be pretty responsive and quick to rectify any errors that might take place.
Thank you. That actually was in my, the end of my notes that somehow did not copy into here. Yes.
And just as a comment, I did call, actually, because my son is going through way too much money, and as we sat down and looked through it, one, Sandy called me back and explained the difference if things are purchased after a certain time, and I was able to review it with my son to make sure that there were no discrepancies, so.
The, just elaborating on that a little more, one of the things that we were told is that sometimes students purchase food for friends, and they might not go back and tell their parents. And then, of course, the biggest thing was the after-school sales, how it's reported the next day. So, you know, well, little Johnny wasn't in school today, how could he have purchased something? So that's why there's some confusion, but hopefully, as, you know, this gets out, more people understand, and certainly they have the ability to log into the account and view everything that's there. Facility use applications, Wall Recreation was looking to use the auditorium during the summer. The town would have to pay for the direct costs associated with its use as per policy. Facility use update, Mr. Romano gave us an update. There was an attachment that was also posted on the website. The project, the front door entrance at the superintendent's office was completed for $7,551, and card readers will be installed once they've been delivered. That's part of the security upgrades. The batting cages over on 18th Avenue, they were repaired. They replaced the netting with fencing. That was for $5,000. The high school lighting was completed. You know, there's talk, it's just not light bulbs, it was new fixtures. The emergency, the one thing that has come up is the emergency lights that were installed. Because there are new fixtures and new bulbs, they're much brighter, and we're going to look to put them on a dimmer, because they do interfere with performances now, they're that bright. In addition, a new control panel was installed for the 40 new light fixtures, and there's now three different zones. Of the total cost of $45,203, $17,500 was for the installation, and we, one of the other things we had to do is we also had to meet the candlelight requirement, because students are in there. Intermediate School, the motorized projector was installed and completed at a cost of $1,500, which is right behind us. High School, AC repairs, new condensing units, project is still in progress. Two new condensers were ordered. The old ones were old, and they were oversized, and they were using too much electric and causing problems. West Belmar front porch project is still being worked on. It passed the framing inspection, and it potentially could have been completed by 510. Now, still, that was just a rough date, so, as with all construction things, sometimes don't finish when you want. Not on the report, we had a discussion about the high school tennis court lights, and they will not go on until someone goes to the box and turns them on, and once they're on, they will shut off automatically at 10:00 PM every night, if they're still in use at that time. This was recommended by the FNF Committee to save money in electric bills. The long-range facility plan, the attachment was provided to the board, and it's also to the public on the website. There were no changes in the plan itself. We are going forward with the paving projects at the schools once summer is underway. We had a discussion on the cottages at Central School after a question about repairs, the repairs that are needed. We've talked about this several times. It's felt that the repairs cannot wait, and estimates will be provided so work can begin over the summer. And if you remember, there's a lot of rot and different things going on in those cottages, and they need to be repaired. The purchase of school buses, we were awarded the grant for $100,000 for the purchase of five large buses and two small vans. Currently, we're out to bid on the financing, and that was received on May 16th. A resolution to accept the EPA grant will be on tonight as an action item. Special Service Professional Service Providers, that will be on the agenda this evening for a recommendation. We did not have anything at FNF that was coming from Special Services. State contract vendors for 2019-20, the attachment was provided to the board and public on the website. This is the list that's provided every year that we approve of contractors, vendors that we approve. So what our district does is we just don't approve everybody on the state contract list. We only approve people that we use, and if that changes, we, the business office brings it to us for approval for anybody else. The other thing to keep in mind, too, is that- The other thing to keep in mind, too, is that we're just not limited to using the vendors on this list. Everybody's encouraged to go out and get better pricing if possible, and it's always in our best interest to stretch a dollar, and certainly for schools, because then they're able to purchase more supplies. We had a discussion about Allenwood PTG, they are looking to donate a playground with a value of $110,000. The PTG wanted to know who's going to remove the old playground. We had some questions, the committee had some questions on exactly what's proposed, what kind of playground it is. And the superintendent was going to talk to the building principal to find out more about this and report back to FNF at our next meeting. And that is all I have for this evening, submitted by me.
Just as an update or clarification, the special service providers is being pushed off till next month, to June, so we'll bring them to FNF.
Okay.
In June, prior to the board meeting.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions.
Mrs. Malloy.
Thank you. Ms. Connolly. The playground, do we know the playground that's on there currently? How old is that?
We do, it's 20 years old. I do have a report that I'll be bringing back to FNF about the scope of the playground that the Allenwood PTG is providing.
Okay, so we, we don't have an estimate of the cost to take down the existing?
Actually, Mr. Smythe has spoken with the township, and they are going to remove the old playground.
Great news, okay.
Yeah, that was a question I had, because I live across the street and I pull out every day, and I had no idea it was 20 years old. I mean, it feels like it was five years ago, if that, but it does fly, unfortunately.
Any other questions with regards to the FNF minutes? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Adenizio, and I appreciate it. So, moving on, we will open the floor at this time for public comment on agenda action items, per number 16 in the agenda, this is pursuant to policy 0167.
Just want to go over a couple of things in the agenda tonight. One thing I, oh, what happened with item number seven, nominations for Board of Education vacancy, did you skip over that?
Mrs. Cross, we didn't have the time in executive session to deal with that, we're going into executive session again after this, after the public portion of the meeting.
So you're saying you didn't talk about it at all in executive session?
We did not have an opportunity to, in the executive session.
So maybe you should have said that when you came into the meeting. My number one item here is legal services. I find it extremely hard to believe, I almost thought it was a typo that Michael Gross's firm was on here to be hired again. I think he's been here since 1999, stuff I look back to, he's been here since then. We've had more problems, one after the next. Attorney fees, you just can't even keep track of them. We've spent, since Cheryl's contract was open, $41,000 just on her contract. We're getting bad legal advice over and over and over again. Mr. Gross is helping Mr. Smythe try and not give public information, he just lost a GOC case on that. I totaled up Mr. Gross's bills just for that item and hiding those doc, that document that showed Mr. Smythe misallocated $192,000, that was $6,200 just for the first three months, and I'm not finished. Mr. Smythe has billed us $77,000 on legal bills for special education. He's billed us, and this is starting in August of 2017, when Ms. Dyer opened up and the board voted on her illegal contract. WTEA, he's charged $28,000. The yearbook issue is about $7,000. He has billed us for 1,646 hours, for a total of $230,000. I wouldn't care if Michael Gross was free, he cannot be our attorney again. You need to pull that out of the agenda and vote on it separately, and, you know, maybe we can see a show of hands in here, who thinks we should rehire Michael Gross? If you could raise your hand. It's a pretty crowded room, and there's not one hand up, not one. So, did you put your hand up? I'll say it if you did.
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
Ann Moonin would like to rehire Michael Gross. So we have one person. Ann Moonin, I agree on a lot of things, that is one that I do not agree with. She was a great board member, but Michael Gross has gotten us in a lot of bad situations. So before people vote on him tonight, make sure you clearly say why you're voting yes, if you're voting yes. I think it should be investigated if he gets hired tonight. I'm looking at the minutes. Ms. Connolly, I may need to go over the five minutes, will you allow me to go over that? Because there's some problems in the way you've noted the minutes. One other thing, on Michael Gross, legal bills pile on Middletown School pension debt. Mr. Gross charged $43,000 in 2017, this article's from, and then he was not rehired, it looks like in 2018. I'm hearing from people on the street that other firms are not rehiring Michael Gross. So, how he's on the agenda, if you could go over a summary of all the other bids you got, I can't imagine you only got his. We did have a problem back in 2016, when Mr. Brophy, Eric Brophy, he only contacted three friends or three acquaintances. And I wrote an email back in 2016 in February, you, Ms. Dyer, and I brought it with me tonight. So there was a problem back then with the attorneys, he only went to three, and then we hired Alan Roth, and we didn't have a dollar amount in the contract. And I believe we violated your own policy on that. Ms. Wadniak, you actually voted to table it that night, and Ernie Bon Giovanni, and everybody else voted yes. Mike McArthur, Eric Brophy. Trying to think who the other two were, but that never should have happened. We did do just negotiations with Alan Roth, that was a disaster, but you could just hire Michael Gross for just negotiations. You don't have to hire him to be the attorney, and that would only be if the WTEA, I think, wanted that. I don't think it would be up to the board. You laughing, Mr. Gross? Please stop, you know, stalling and not getting the contracts done, you know, these contracts should be done for the Board of Ed members. On the agenda, Mr.?
Mrs. Cross, your five minutes are up.
Ms. Connolly, can I extend the five minutes?
We're sticking to the five minutes tonight, Mrs. Cross, because there was no motion, so your five minutes is up.
Could somebody possibly make a motion, if you'd like to hear from the public? There's problems with the minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Cross.
I don't want Mr. Smythe being voted on for Board Secretary.
I do have some questions as well.
Mrs. Cross, thank you. Your five minutes is up.
Don't vote on Mr. Smythe being Board Secretary tonight.
Mrs. Cross.
Somehow you put that in there and snuck it in.
Mrs. Cross.
You're not voting on his contract, so don't vote for Board Secretary.
Mrs. Cross.
Or for Custodian of Records. Make sure you pull that out separately.
Can I ask my questions? If you could reserve your questions till public comment is over, Mrs. Malloy.
Thank you, Mrs. Cross.
I have three items I'd like to address. First, in the, the meeting minutes, I noticed that Mr. Smythe is not listed for approval as business administrator for the school, and I would like to urge the board to delay their vote on assigning him the positions of Board Secretary and as the Custodian of Records until that contract is fully negotiated and executed by all parties. It just makes sense, there's no reason to do it tonight, and you don't know what's going to happen in the next month. Nobody's made any agreements yet that he continue in his role. So I'm asking that you delay the vote until he actually occupies the position, so that you don't have to take back your vote, should he not be appointed. Also, I, Betsy mentioned as she left, that there are problems with the report of the meeting minutes, for the various meeting minutes that were put out tonight. I'd like to say that we were given very little time to review them. I've just had, since the opening of the meeting, to review them, and I noticed multiple errors. For example, April 16th, the first paragraph is completely an inaccurate record of what transpired at public comment. For example, when Ms. Cross complained on April 16th that Brian Smythe's W2s don't match, she complained that his W2s don't match with his contract, not with his payroll. It is still a problem, it has never been addressed, even though I know Ms. Malloy maybe thinks it was addressed, because the minutes note that she raised the issue, and that Ms. Connolly responded that it had all been gone through, not with us, not with us. The discrepancies between the actual contract and the W2s have never been answered for the public, and we are the ones asking the questions. Where Ms. Cross mentioned the verification of residency, what's missing out of every comment in this meeting minutes is why she said it, and she articulated why, it's just omitted, so that anybody reading this would have no idea what she's talking about. So I only can conclude that the person recording this and writing this, I don't know who it is, I suspect it's Brian Smythe, either did that to deliberately twist her words, or because he actually doesn't understand what she's talking about. When she talked about the verification of residency, it was a way to cut student costs. Again, the W2s not matching was not with the payroll, but with the contract. To replace the attorney, she made her argument based on the state appellate court decision and the Records Council decisions about lies and the illegal strategies, their words, the court's words, not ours, and she made that recommendation, but all of that is left out of the minutes. And I have found the same thing to be true for my comments and Ms. Cross's comments on at least three of these meeting minutes. I only have a few minutes to take a breath and speak now, but it's filled with errors, and I think deliberate obfuscation and deletion of the important things that need to be said. And I think that's done to mislead the public. The third item is the, and I am speaking tonight only in my capacity as a taxpayer of Wall Township, and as a parent of three students in the school district, I am not speaking here in my professional capacity, but I would like to urge the board to not vote for the renewal of the contract for the Kenny Gross and Kovats firm. And I understand why Betsy recommended that you hire them for the union contract. If I was in the union, I'd be happy if they were hired for the union contract, because I'm not overly impressed. But be that as it may, there is no requirement that you hire him for the full year just to get those union contract deal done. You can split the services, but let's talk really specifically, how much time do I have, please?
A little more than a minute.
Okay. The Superior Court, what they said, and I told you that I was there, what they said about Mr. Gross and his representation of the board on Ms. Dyer's contract was staggeringly bad. We would call it a smackdown, or that an attorney got spanked. It is not something to be proud of. On page three of the decision, they called it, the Board of Education's position was absurd. They are trying to circumvent the law, they were, they were assisted in that by Mr. Gross. If I said, like I said in another meeting, if you have to search that hard for a fig leaf, what you're doing is wrong. Your grandmother, your mom would tell you it was wrong. On page eight, they said that normally they don't intervene in any, any kind of disputes like that, unless there's been something that was arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable, lacked fair support in the evidence, and violated a legislative policy. In the governing statute, they found all of that to be true in this case. On page nine, they, they urged, they said that the position taken by Dyer, Dyer's attorney and by Mr. Gross representing the board were, they were not reading the law sensibly. They found it ludicrous, the position. Page 11, it's, they found that the statute's unambiguous and doesn't lend itself to any interpretation other than it's ordinary and plain meeting, and they referred to it as a strategy. And the, if you had the transcript of the entire proceeding, they lambasted Mr. Gross for the machinations that he had to go through to try to make this palatable. It's wrong, wrong, wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Renn.
Let me just take a different breath to point out, on page 13, you should look at 14 of the decision, and 15.
Thank you, Mr. Renn.
And they found that it was all done with a deliberate intent to violate the clear mandate of the law. It shouldn't have been done, period. The person who did that and advised the board shouldn't be rehired.
Thank you.
If you guys could just, could you guys just answer for me as you vote tonight? If you're voting on that contract, I'd like each member to place their reason for voting to rehire the firm that caused problems at the Records Council and at the Appell Division. I'd like to know why each member believes it's okay to ignore those, thanks.
Do we have anybody else for public comment on the action items? Okay, seeing none, we will close this section of public comment. At this time, I need a motion to...
Wait, I have questions.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mrs. Malloy, I forgot that. Go ahead.
So, someone referenced a list of issues since 1999. Do we, are we aware of that? Do we happen to have a list of issues that have gone wrong because of our law firm somewhere? We'd be here all night. Do we have something? No, we don't. So we're not aware of any issues? Abel, Han, Eileen.
Do you have, are there any other questions?
Okay. I just wanted to check.
There was a special investigation, a report that I just sent out.
And then the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes, who is, they're taken off of the video, do we know who is doing the meeting minutes?
The Board Secretary is responsible for the meeting minutes.
Okay. So I'm assuming we, we don't write everyone's words, word for word?
You'd have to direct your questions to him.
Oh, Mr. Smythe.
Minutes of the meeting are to record the actions of the meeting, we go beyond that and try to do our best to provide a sense of what the comments that are made, depending on the meeting, depending on the length, some are, in fact, verbatim, and others, we point out the subject that the public speaking, and as well as the board members, the topic that they're speaking on.
And then everything is on video and posted for anyone to go and see the minutes of every meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just the, the W2 versus the contract, I feel like this has been addressed multiple times. It wasn't, it was the W2 versus the contract. I think we referenced it in, what was it, the, one of the meetings? Can you just refresh my memory?
With regard to the question, and when it was posed, it had to do with two years where...
I said four years, four to eight. Go over that, Mr. Smythe, I'm going to tape it, okay? Thank you. Go ahead. You wrote in the minutes, you went over it, we can read the whole sentence, go ahead.
Mrs. Cross, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you nicely, not to interrupt the meeting, you were given your opportunity to speak, now the board is conducting its business, and you should be listening, not speaking, thank you.
With regard to the year that additional $20,000 was compensated to me and another individual in the business office, when the then-business administrator resigned from the position and we took over business office responsibilities, as well as those of the Board Secretary, I received an additional $20,000. That was in addition to my contract-based pay, that was reported on my W2. Any other years, there's not been an analysis, because there's not been a discrepancy reported as far as what the dollar amount was. What the explanation that has been provided is, just in any employee who receives either additional compensation, or has received a reduction in compensation with regard to like an unpaid leave of absence, their W2 would be different than their contract-based pay. You know, in addition, if a contract is not settled, such as a WTEA contract, and back 10 years ago, non-represented were not settled until the WTEA contract was settled, and if that carried into the next fiscal year, or actually into the next calendar year, and retro pay was issued, that retro pay would be reported on the W2 of that calendar year, and that may not match with the contract pay for that employee. Additionally, which may also contribute to a discrepancy, or I don't like to use the word discrepancy, a difference between the W2 and the contract pay is, within my contract, I received a school vehicle for a number of years. Well, there's an imputed income cost that would be reported... Well, there's an imputed income cost that would be reported on my W-2 that would not be directly matched as a dollar value in my contract. It's, it would, a value would be put to the vehicle, and that would be included on my W-2 as part of my gross pay.
And just to confirm, the W-2 goes from January 1 to December 31?
Correct.
And the calendar, fiscal calendar year goes from?
The district's fiscal year, or not contract, July 1 to June 30.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Adenizia. Mrs. Cross, please stop. Yeah. Yeah. Mrs. Cross, please stop. You're out of order. Mr. Adenizia?
So, I asked this question, I believe, we talked about it maybe in FNF one night. The procedure for, and the procedure for someone, someone gets a raise, it's not like they can just say, okay, put the money in my paycheck. There's a process. It goes, it goes, you understand what I'm saying? It goes to HR. Could you, could you, are you familiar with that process? Could you talk about that a little bit? Because I think people sometimes think that I want to give myself a raise, and I just sign something and automatically there's a raise. So, and I know, I've asked this question, and it was explained to me, but I'm hoping maybe it could be explained again this evening.
So, since 2015, anytime someone is approved on the HR report, they are also approved with a salary amount. Prior to my arrival in the district, I did notice that on HR reports, people would be approved when a contract wasn't settled with a salary amount TBD. And then it could be that several months later, when the contract was settled, their salary was then reported on the HR report. But I did go back several years, and I found evidence of when, of instances where that didn't happen. There was a TBD, there was then a contract settled with a memorandum of agreement, people's salaries were calculated, but it did not necessarily appear on an HR report. So it always appears on an HR report. If the contract is not settled, then the salary is reported at the current salary, and then as soon as the contracts are settled, the new salary amount is reported, and people are reappointed into their roles, so that there's a pretty good paper trail. As Mr. Smythe has pointed out, he is a non-represented employee, so he's not part of a collective bargaining unit. The non-represented employees in the past did not receive their new salaries until contracts were settled, even though they're not represented and they're annual employees. You know, that is not the recommended course of action. Non-represented employees are exactly that. They're non-represented. They're individuals. So I think, does that answer your question? The individual, plus to get back to a comment that you made at the beginning, no individual can give him or herself a raise. That is only done by the Board of Education. And so the Board of Education negotiates contracts with the collective bargaining groups. They also meet and discuss the recommendations for increases for non-represented employees. As Mr. MacArthur reported in the Personnel Committee minutes, they meet and discuss whatever the individual might be requesting in terms of additional contract benefits, vacation time, et cetera. And then those contracts are all individually approved for non-represented employees. They're approved collectively for the collective bargaining units, but individually for the non-reps. It's only after the board makes those recommendations that that information is given to the HR report in preparation for that department to prepare the HR agenda for the board to take action on.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. At this time, moving on to item 17, I need a motion to approve the secretary's minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments with regards to the secretary's minutes? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Smythe.
Mr. Adenizia?
Yes.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Sanflippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Swanniac?
Yes.
Yes. At this time, I need a motion to approve after public hearing for first reading the items listed under policy for 18A.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Questions or comments? If there's anybody in the audience who has anything to say on any of the policies listed for approval for first reading, now is the time for public hearing. Seeing none, closed. Roll call.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Sanflippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Swanniac?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizia?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes. At this time, I need a motion to recommend for approval after public hearing the items listed for second reading as number 18B under policy.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments with regards to those items for second reading? Seeing none, at this time, we can open the floor for public hearing on the three items listed for second reading, if anybody has public comment on those items. None. Roll call.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Sanflippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Swanniac?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizia?
Yes.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes. At this time, I need a motion to approve by consent agenda number 19, items A through Q.
I'll make that motion.
Wait, wait, wait. I'll second that motion.
Please do not call out from the audience. Cross.
Separate Michael Gross. Do a vote separate for Michael Gross. And everybody say while you're voting-
Mrs. Cross, you are out of order, and I'm not going to give you another opportunity to be out of order.
Separate-
Mrs. Cross, if you continue to interrupt the meeting, you will be asked to leave.
L.
Mrs. Cross, one last time, if you interrupt the meeting, you will be asked to leave.
Did I get a motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments with regards, any questions or comments with regards to number 19? Seeing none.
Mr. Sanflippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Abstain on L and M, and yes of everything else.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Swanniac?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizia?
Yes.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes. Moving to item 20, superintendent's report. Mrs. Dyer?
Good job, John, for abstaining.
Mrs. Cross, can you please stop?
Please leave. Mrs. Cross, please leave.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes, with regard to the superintendent's report, before I ask for a motion to move items A through N, I would like to add another item to the HR report. So please bear with me. Dear members of the Wall Township Board of Education, please be advised that at this time, I am submitting my notice of retirement effective July 1, 2020. I wanted to give the board as much time as possible for a thorough search for your next superintendent. I am looking forward to working throughout the coming year with all of you, the administrators and the staff of Wall Township, in whom I continue to have confidence. Therefore, I respectfully request that you allow me to include my notice of retirement as an amendment to the Human Resources Report this evening. With that, I would ask for a motion for approval on consent agenda items A through N of the superintendent's report, including that amendment to the HR report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments with regards to the superintendent's report? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Swanniac?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizia?
Yes, except I'm going to abstain from any conflicts I have with the WTASC. Also, a family member is listed in the report, and I abstain from the amendment. And yes to everything else.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Sanflippo?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes. Item number 21, Mr. Smythe, business office.
Yes, for a motion to approve by consent agenda items 21A through N under the business office.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments with regards to the business office items? Seeing none.
Mr. Wondrack?
Yes.
Ms. Swanniac?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizia?
Yes.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Sanflippo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes. So at this time, we will open the floor for public comment on any item pursuant to policy 0167.
Members of the Board of Education, my name is Laura Grinelli. I'm from Neptune, New Jersey. I am going to be reading this for a friend. In light of recent developments concerning the Board of Education and the administration of the schools, the author of the following email felt it necessary to speak up about their dealings with the school situation. Now, we do know that the superintendent is retiring, and we have best wishes for her retirement, but the Board of Education should take this email under consideration for the vetting of your next superintendent. That is the head of your school district. That is the face of the school district to the public. It's the most important position in the district. My friend would have liked to come to speak for herself, but is choosing not to, so the identity of her child will not be revealed, and so the safety and mental health of her child is protected. Since she respects the right of board members to request to meet and discuss the events I'm about to describe, an email was sent to each board member. In the email, she identified herself and offers to meet with any or all of them to discuss her concerns, answer any questions that may have, and to provide documentation supporting each claim that is about to be made. At this time, I am also reminding Board of Education members that each of you are bound by law not to discuss this person or child with members of the public without notifying the author of the email. I'm going to read the letter as it was written in the first person, but please understand this is my friend speaking about her child, who was 11 years old when the school district and in the school district at the time that these events happened. On Tuesday, April 25, 2017, I emailed a district principal and Mrs. Dyer because my child's life had been placed in danger more than once while in school. With some wording changed to protect the child's identity, the email stated, "On March 15, 2017, a suicide safety plan was developed by my child psychiatrist, myself, and my child. On March 16, 2017, this suicide safety plan was communicated to the principal via email. The principal replied, indicating that they approved of the plan, and they would communicate the plan to the nurse and my child's teachers. On March 22, 2017, at 3:00 PM, the principal contacted me regarding one of my child's social media posts that had been brought to the principal's attention, indicating my child's possible intent of suicide. At that time, Board of Education policy was violated in three ways. First, the principal did not refer my child to the child's study team for screening. Second, the principal allowed my child, that was deemed to be possibly suicidal, get on the bus at dismissal without even checking to see if an adult would be home. Third, the principal did not require my child to be medically cleared to return to school. Unfortunately, this was not the last time my child's safety was put at risk by the school district. On April 21, 2017, Board of Education policy was again violated. On this day, my child got off the bus, came into the house, collapsed on the couch sobbing, and yelled, 'You lied!' Earlier that day, my child tried to enact the suicide safety plan for the first time. My child went to the teacher, asked to go to the nurse, but was denied access because the teacher had no knowledge of the safety plan, let alone what the details of the plan were. You see, the plan stated that if my child wanted to go to the nurse, the request was to be granted immediately with no questions asked. Since the teacher was not made aware of the plan, she questioned my child as to why she wanted to go to the nurse. My child did not feel comfortable sharing that she was feeling suicidal with this teacher, especially in front of the whole class. So she then asked to go to the bathroom. My child ended up in the bathroom alone, crying while she was feeling suicidal. Again, my child's life was put at risk by the school district. Members of the Board of Education, I feel it is important that you know, your superintendent received all of these facts on April 25, 2017, in an email. It is important that you know, your superintendent never responded to my email, she never requested to meet me, nor did she ever call or even ask how my child was doing. On April 3, 2017, I requested to meet with Mrs. Dyer. On August 7, this meeting took place. I reviewed all of the facts listed in the email, provided supporting documentation, and provided data that clearly indicated the suicide rates in preteens are increasing at an alarming rate. Furthermore, I provided a very sad example of an elementary student in Ohio that had successfully completed suicide in their elementary school bathroom only a few months prior. And remember, that's where my child ended up, when denied access to his safety plan. I stated it was disturbing that the principal was not knowledgeable of what the board policy states regarding procedures that must be followed in order to ensure student's safety when they may be suicidal. When I asked if the principal had been trained on this topic in order to ensure the same mistakes were not repeated in the future, your superintendent's response was that she could not discuss it. Mrs. Dyer's demeanor during the meeting was alarming. She sat emotionless. She did not ask one question. She did not write anything down. At the end of the meeting, when I attempted to give her the studies, articles, and other documents I referenced, she said she didn't need them. Again, while these events outlined here took place two years ago, it is not inconceivable that others have experienced the same. It is for that reason the author has made these facts public. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and please do a thorough vetting of any future employees of the Neptune, of the Wall Township Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Grinelli.
Gail Marr, President of the Wall Township Education Association. It's funny, in an ironic sort of way, that one of my Facebook memories this past Sunday was that of the board meeting on May 19, 2017. How many people remember that meeting? Robyn Swanniac sent out a scathing email about the WTEA negotiations process, and out came the members. We planned to fill the intermediate school cafeteria with all the WTEA members we had. Somehow, the Board of Ed got wind of the large presence that was expected that night. Ron Volano, our UNISERV rep, hears from Michael Gross, who says, 'Let them come with their blue shirts on. We don't care.' And that sums it up. Disrespect then, disrespect now, disrespect for the last four and a half years. There's a need for the WTEA to address what the superintendent trivialized on May 7, and we will do that with members talking about some of the events that brought us to this place, where a no-confidence vote was our only recourse. Our first item to clarify, so many grievances, so little time. The superintendent was correct. They were not all grievances. Some were and some weren't. And she was also correct that all of the situations did not begin with her, but her presence was felt at all levels of the process. High school, personal day denial, resolved in our favor. District, paraprofessional mileage calculation, clarified and resolved. Old Mill, letter removed from file, resolved in our favor. Transportation, letter removed from file, resolved in our favor. Intermediate school, personal day denial, resolved in our favor. High school, HIB unfounded, letter removed. Intermediate school bereavement issued. Intermediate school bereavement issue, resolved in our favor, sidebar created. High school, grievance withdrawn, to be pursued in a different manner. Transportation, selection process, package process, resolved in our favor. High school, reimbursement of expenses, resolved in our favor. Operations custodial, jury duty issue, resolved in our favor. Cafeteria docking, resolved in our favor. Each of these issues, whether grievable or not, HIB or not, withdrawn or not, it is all about people and how they're treated in the course of their employment here in Wall. We are not going to rehash their stories for their fear of retaliation. Teachers that receive thank you emails that have typos in it. No, 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 sorry. Without, I lost my place, I apologize. Secretaries that do not do just their jobs but others when positions aren't filled. Secretaries that have to deal with their 3% raise and not in 19, and getting their summer hours changed for no good reason. Cafeteria employees that have lived through an outsourcing attempt, and drivers and their paraprofessionals that are mandated to start their day and end it in an entirely different town. I'm sorry for your enduring pain, and I thank you for bringing your best game to Wall every day. Before I turn this over to other members that would like to speak, I wanted a moment to talk about the topic on new hiring protocols in the district that the superintendent referred to on May 7th. Listening to the audio of the meeting, the superintendent described the protocols. New superintendent-created hiring protocols were put in place with teacher and administrator input, and that is correct. I believe the last time I was asked to choose a teacher to sit in on the panel was for Dr. York. Did the hiring panel at the time know that Monica Butler was a personal longtime friend of the superintendent for 20-something years? Did the board know? Did the hiring panel know that Edward Hormich was Monica Butler's husband when he was brought in at a high step on the paraprofessional guide? I certainly didn't. Did the board know? Is that written down as one of the hiring protocols? Make sure you ask, is there anyone in administration in the district that you know personally? The past suggests that the answer to all of that is a hard no. Thank you for your time.
Board members, I would like to talk to you about something.
You need your name and your place of residence, sir?
Marcus Kerschenbaum, West Belmar. Mr. Smythe, I spoke to you at the beginning of the year in regards to a medical problem that my daughter has. Last year at the end of May, my wife got a letter telling me to pick up any medicine that my daughter had at the intermediate school. She was in sixth grade going into seventh. I forgot. And it completely slipped my mind. And then I get her, some in September, saying that it's going to be, it was thrown out. So I went to the school nurse, who I think is new in the position, and she told me it was state policy that any medicine left for any child at the end of the school year is to be thrown out. So I called the state. State says they never heard of it. Called Monmouth County. I called Monmouth County. They said, "Let me give you the attorney's name for the Wall Township School District." He gave me a number, not a name. I called the number, I gave Mrs. Smythe. My daughter has to take an EpiPen. She has a chance of an allergic reaction. In 2015, Chris Christie signed a rule that all schools will carry EpiPens. Now, my daughter's EpiPen did not expire until February of 2019 because I replaced it last year. So when I asked, she said she threw it out, and I basically said, you know, when she told me all that, and I said, "None of that exists", she goes, "Well, it's district policy." I said, "Let me explain something to you. Right now, there's only one company that makes EpiPens. Those EpiPens cost 300 bucks, okay? They're in your care for my child. They are my property, okay?" Then I come to find out, they didn't throw them out. And they were still good, which made me happy because they're expensive to replace. And Mrs. Smythe said some medicines that are used for children that are opened, that is the policy. But for something like an EpiPen that has never been used and in the box, it really shouldn't be too hard to see what grade the child is and if she's going to be in that grade the next year, and maybe they can change the policy so that children that need medicine that are expensive, that have not been opened, will be kept. Since you have to keep the EpiPens for the governor, why can't you keep my child's? And have you given any thought to this, Mrs. Smythe, since I know it's been months since I spoke to you?
It's not normally a question and answer, so if you have anything else with your time, and then we can respond to stuff afterwards. So you've, if there are any other comments you'd like to make.
No, no, that's just it, I just want to impress the board that when medicine is expensive, it's kind of hard on the parents not to be taken into consideration. And I know it was my fault for not listening to my wife, but what husband listens to their wives? Thank you.
Jennifer Farina, teacher of language arts. I'm picking up where Gail Marr left off with the second item, cafeteria outsourcing and how it remained in-house. Food services is in the red, of course it is, since the high school went back to block scheduling three years earlier. How would anyone think an entire school who ate over four lunch periods could feed the same amount of students in an hour and expect them to stand in line without the students developing their own plan? The WTEA heard about the outsourcing at the board meeting. We were not asked to be part of the committee or offer suggestions to help resolve the situation. We were just being told that in the red meant that the function needed to be outsourced since the enterprise account could not continue unless it was in the black. No one here should believe that. Cheryl and Brian, with the FNF Committee, analyzed the situation and came to the decision that the function should remain in-house. There is nothing further from the truth. The 25 members of the cafeteria were told that only two employees would be kept. The others could interview with the company that would win the bid and work for them. Becky and Phyllis were filled with regret and chose to retire, which was not their plan at the beginning of that school year. While working on their normal day, companies that run cafeterias would come through, look at the facility, the equipment, and their potential new employees. And how disturbing was that to our members? It wasn't until we had the help from the NJEA and the community did things begin to turn around. Lawn signs were put up around the town saying, "No strangers in our schools." And the WTEA president was blasted by Eric Brophy on how we, how could we do that? That community's support and the forensic audit finding that $192,000 that was not expenses of the cafeteria was booked to the enterprise account. This is what turned the outsourcing event around, not Brian, Cheryl, or the FNF Committee. And for the grand finale, they also cut the food services supervisor's salary. Cheryl Dyer's willingness to fire 23 valued members of our school staff, some who have worked here for decades. This shows us loud and clear that she didn't care about the individuals who supported our students every day. The fact is, is that we need a new leader that truly cares about every employee that makes our schools great.
Hi, my name is Maria Grimes, and I've been a language arts teacher here at the intermediate school for the last six years. And the third issue that we are going to discuss tonight is the 2016 to 2019 negotiations process and why it dragged on for 18 months. Contrary to what the superintendent claims, this was not the fault of the WTEA. The superintendent corrected the WTEA when she stated that the WTEA negotiates with the board and not the superintendent. And that is true in most cases. But in our case, the superintendent was at every meeting and was one of the two that spoke on behalf of the board. She also said that the leadership of the WTEA asked for changes that they then argued against and that we also asked for drastic changes to the cost of health benefits. Now, let's take each of those items separately and analyze them. Why would we ask for items and then argue against the same items? Does that make any sense? And if we did, why wouldn't the board straighten us out when we did that? The fact is, that never happened. As far as for asking for drastic changes to the cost of health benefits, we did that. For the first 14 months of negotiations, health benefits were off the table, and we were not even able to discuss it. It wasn't until Michael Gross became part of the process that it was back on the table. This was a 14-month delay for just one item. Eric Brophy was the president of the board at the time, and he lasted as lead negotiator for about four months. He came and went, and Alan Roth, an outside attorney, did the same. There was also a paid arbitrator before Michael Gross, who became part of the process. It's very unfortunate that we needed an outsider arriving on the scene to get the ball rolling. Those health benefits that the superintendent spoke about had all of the teachers, custodians, bus drivers, and secretaries receiving less money each year in their pockets for 2011, 2012, 2013, 2014, and 2015. Because of this, we certainly did ask for health benefit costs to change. It's ludicrous to think that 2011 was the highest take-home pay the WTEA members had for five entire years. Negotiations officially began on January 29th, 2016. We talked for months on language changes that never were made. Meetings were filled with a great deal of screaming. Eric Brophy was out as the lead negotiator, and Alan Roth, an outside attorney, was in. Fast forward to February 2017, and Michael Gross was now the lead, and we were back to agreeing on ground rules 13 months after we already began. It wasn't until the end of April 2017 that we thought we were getting close, but a mediator was needed to get us to the finish line in June 2017. After all this, can you honestly claim that it was the WTEA who lengthened the negotiations process? Eric Brophy was first, Alan Roth was second, and the paid arbitrator was the third on the board's side, coming in the summer months of 2016. Then there was a lull when we didn't meet, and Michael Gross the next winter. 18 months. The teachers, bus drivers, secretaries, custodians, support staff, and everyone else who helps run this district had to wait to settle on a contract. But Cheryl Dyer can get her contract approved in just one meeting. Imagine that. Thank you for retiring.
Can I go? I'm Donna Andreen, Wall Township. This is my son Zachary Andreen, also Wall Township, who's going to take the rest of what I have to say in case I run out of my five minutes. I want to address the current sad state of affairs with the most recent lawsuit regarding the yearbook advisor versus the district. I read the lawsuit, I find it really disturbing, and it really makes my skin crawl. Three years ago, I had the unpleasant experience of witnessing Ms. Dyer and some high school administrative employees attempt to throw another teacher under the bus. I want to say that I'm positive that the board at the time was not involved in this in any way. It was solely within the school and with the superintendent. So I did call this out at the April 19th, 2016, meeting, and I know that a lot of board members that are on the board now were not there at the time, so I'm going to recount this because I think it's important that you hear it in regards to the censorship lawsuit. And I want you to listen carefully, I believe Mrs. Parsons, and I'm going to tell you why I do. During the height of the park refusals and the bribes of pizza parties and prom bids and getting out of their finals, a department head came into my son's classroom to speak to the kids about park. His class was told by this person that if the kids refused the test or do not do well, the resultant fall of property values in Wall would solely be the fault of students. That's outrageous and inappropriate. My son came home asking me what that meant, and I asked him if his teacher actually said that. He said, "No, it was someone who he didn't know and he had never seen before." I questioned him further, I believed him, and shortly after I did, I contacted you, Ms. Dyer, and I also contacted Ms. Sergio. And I demanded to know who said that, because it was so highly inappropriate. There was a little back and forth for a little while, I think, between the two of you, and shortly thereafter, I got a response. Mrs. Dyer, you told me you would leave no stone unturned to find out who it was. However, you also told me that it was most likely a comment made by his teacher, because her husband is a realtor, and that would make sense that she would say that. I was also told the exact same thing by Ms. Sergio. It didn't make sense to me. And when I didn't buy that answer, you told me, "Well, maybe your son didn't want to get his teacher in trouble, and he wasn't completely truthful." Sometimes kids do that. That's outrageous. So not only did you attempt to throw his teacher under the bus, but then when I insisted that I didn't believe that his teacher said it, you attempted to continue to avoid blame by suggesting that perhaps my son was not being honest with me. All because you got caught orchestrating something that you should not have been doing and tried to pass the blame when you got caught. Thankfully, the teacher was never punished, probably because she was innocent, and you already know who said it. And she didn't even know about it until very recently. And here we are again in the same type of situation, but the incident is much more serious. My son is here with me tonight if anybody would like to question his integrity about whether he tells the truth to his mother. Unbelievable. That is disgraceful and insulting. In my eyes, the similarities between the two situations speak directly to a pattern of behavior of scapegoating teachers and apparently sometimes students for what you're cooking up in the back room. How many do we not know about? I know about two. The two I know about is too, too many. When I take the similarities into consideration, it's very difficult for me not to believe Mrs. Parsons in her lawsuit. I am disappointed, and I am angry that you conduct yourself this way. This is not leadership. True leaders take responsibility, they encourage their employees, they cheer for them, they defend them. They leave no one behind, and certainly do not hold out employees like a sacrificial lamb to parents to cover yourself. You may not agree with our perception, but we all can't be wrong here. I don't believe that the current administration can be effective at all anymore due to the level of mistrust and morale in our schools. The trust has been irreparably fractured. Our community needs to heal. It's time for change. Do the right thing. Resign, don't retire. Please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lewis Cabazas. I'm a high school sophomore and a resident of Wall Township. The recent events surrounding our school district, our Board of Education, and our superintendent have compelled me to stand up here and speak tonight. As young kids, our parents taught us to respect our elders and people in general. Quite frankly, I am appalled at the comments that have been made at meetings past. We might not like what is said or by whom. However, we must respect the words and the person. Furthermore, we may not agree with our leaders, but we must respect their position. All this makes me wonder, what example are we setting, and what are we teaching our children? To Board of Education, thank you for your service. And for the members of the audience, thank you for listening. try to determine why she should have received a nineteen percent raise. How could she do a better job? Is it because she doesn’t have to answer phones while registering students? Someone else will pick up the phone for her? She doesn’t have students standing in front of her desk like the secretaries in the schools have. All have an emergency to take care of. She doesn’t have to fill in for other secretaries who may be absent. And here’s something to think about. How can Kim have taken on this responsibility? Taking over primary registrations, Allenwood registrations, central registrations, Old Mill registrations, West Belmar registrations, intermediate registrations, and high school registrations? One would think she may not have enough to keep her busy on a day-to-day basis. Her length of day hasn’t changed, but she could fit that responsibility in. No one would have questioned a five percent raise, but nineteen percent is just another way of driving down morale in the district. And number one, number five is lunch/recess supervision. Back in October of 2014, a sidebar was approved. It was before Cheryl. The BOE president was Ken Dioguardi, and the WTEA president was and still is Gail Maher. A regulatory change occurred where a certificated, sorry, staff member needed to be present when students were at lunch and at recess. A stipend was agreed upon, and elementary teachers volunteered to use their lunch or prep period to work through that period as a certified person on duty. So in the 1415 school year, the 1516 school year, the 1617 school year, and the 1718 school year, certified staff were with the students at both lunch and recess. Out of the blue, this year, it stopped. No longer was there a teacher that was in the lunchroom and another teacher that was in with the students on the playground. Why, the WTEA asked? A cost savings decision, the superintendent stated? If it was truly a requirement, how does the district decide to not follow that requirement? Excessive, the superintendent stated, and a change was made without compromising safety. Easy to say that the principal is certified too and can also supervise, but he is running the school, not in the lunchroom or the playground each and every day and every lunch period.
Jennifer Greener, Wall Township. I too am continuing. Summer hours changed. I know that Gail briefly mentioned this before. The secretaries in their summer hours, another broken part that needed to be fixed here in Wall. Secretaries for decades have worked from eight to 1:00 p.m. You directed the principals to change that practice. We are not broken. The community was not concerned if the secretaries only worked until 1:00 p.m. They worked their five required hours, and again, we are not broken. We do not need fixing. February break. The calendar. Without the February break, it truly is a burden for the teachers. Without the break that was scheduled during that one chosen week, families now go on vacation whenever they choose. Students miss instructional time and truly can’t make up that time. It was a bad decision when made, and it is a bad decision now. Labor management meeting. The infamous labor management meeting. Why do you think the WTEA president continues to be involved in issues that should be resolved at a lower level? It’s simple. They don’t get resolved at a lower level. They are just ignored, and members are too fearful of pushing an issue to its resolution. Elementary spring conferences. Spring conferences, another process that the superintendent thought needed changing. A process was put in place haphazardly. With only two days given to complete the conferences, there were not enough slots to fit all the families into. Principals worked with the teachers to work conferences in on other days or at alternate times. What should have happened? Teachers should have been asked what it would take to schedule a conference for each student’s family, but that did not happen because we are not heard by the superintendent. Although, she stated on the 7th that she empowers teachers to bring their ideas forward and always gives them credit for those that continue to work hard. Thank you.
Kathy Sayers, Wall Township. I am also a WTEA, second vice president. Item number 10, negative retro checks. Mrs. Dyer talked about the WTA list of items on her vote of no confidence document. Another of our items on the list was the issue of negative retro pay. Well, her reconciliation of the event is far, I’m sorry, the recollection of her event is far from the WTEA’s. Just imagine how happy everyone was when the WTA contract was ratified in June of 2016. At a contract for an entire year, we are going to get a retro check for the entire increase for the first year of the contract. Yay, says the members. A vacation pay? Pay off one of those bills? Just sock it away? The money for a rainy day? It’s all good, but wait, we hear the district is going to recalculate what would have been paid out on health costs with the new salaries. That makes no sense. The year is over, and there’s nowhere that this money needs to go or any district bill to pay. Ten members who were thinking they were getting something to pay off one of their bills or go on vacation, but instead they were just handed another bill to pay. You get no retro money, the district says, and by the way, you also owe the district money. From $90 to $400, these ten people had to write a check to the district to satisfy a district requirement where the contract would not be ratified by the board. The WTEA put the issue up to a vote. If the members voted yes, we would pay out what was owed by these ten people out of the WTEA crisis relief fund. And it was voted yes. Thank goodness we take care of our own because it seems that no one else cares enough to think about our well-being. Superintendent, why do you believe that decision did to our morale across the board? We cannot have four years of questionable decisions that financially harm the people who work with our students every day. They should be supported by the superintendent, which, as exemplified by her decisions, is not the case now.
Courtney Sarny, Hamilton Township. Good evening. My name is Courtney Sarny. I served the Wall Township School District with pride as a teacher from 2018 to 2017, and teacher in charge of the Allenwood School from 2015 to 2017. I’m so happy to be here tonight to speak out on behalf of the leadership of this district, the leaders, the ones that are staring at you in the audience. They’re in your classrooms, driving the buses, they’re in the cafeteria, they keep our buildings healthy and clean. They’re the paraprofessionals, counselors, secretaries, and of course, the administration. Make no mistake, they are leading this district in the absence of leadership, empathy, and integrity. They have abandoned the notion that you are the leader and the influencer of this district. A double vote of no confidence speaks to the fact that the sphere of influence is now down to most of your dais and perhaps the Georgetown admissions department. Leadership 101 teaches us that without influence, you have no followers, and without followers, you are not a leader. I’d like to take my allotted time here to discuss what I believe to be true. I know what I was exposed to during my tenure here, which was an attempt to be led by force with zero tact or accountability. I believe without a shred of doubt that there is not one care about the culture and climate of the school district or the people employed in it. I know that there has never once been a survey to go to the staff to see what they need, what would make them more successful, what their pain points are, what their strengths are to continue to capitalize on. I believe there is not interest in growing the talent and the skills of her people or even assessing those talents. This lends credence to the suggestion that this is not a leadership who serves, but self-serving leadership. I know not once did the leader comb through the halls with a smile saying thank you, shaking hands and offering acknowledgement of any kind. That’s not even sound business practice, let alone leadership. I am well-versed in this lack of leadership from experience trying to grow in a district into a school leader, my dream job. My growth and leadership abilities were stifled, but as teacher in charge, I hunkered down with the staff of Allenwood, and we took care of business. I grew stagnant and agitated under a toxic work culture, but was still successful. I attribute my success solely to the leadership and partnership of Eric Loughlin, Erin O’Connell, Anthony Abiel, Joseph Fisco, Michael McGowan, Jennifer Salt, Gail Maher, and the two outstanding staffs from Old Mill and Allenwood. I thank you tonight. I’m not here speaking in generalities or on a whim. I’m here speaking from a place of fact, experience, and leadership. I left Wall Township, and I left education completely altogether to find great success, growth, and opportunity. The irony of where I landed is palpable. As the Assistant Vice President for Culture and Engagement at the largest bank in New Jersey, I serve 2,000 people every day across two states. In the not-quite-two years since I have been there, I have done two engagement studies, ten climate and culture-focused groups. I’ve done a six-month roadshow where I-